Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everybody. I'm a few minutes late calling to order the fair hearing of the MTA. This is the third of our hearings on this subject. We look forward to hearing from members of the public. We've heard from quite a few yesterday, and we're going to continue that today. So before we, I want to acknowledge first of all that we have a couple of board members sitting with us, Haida Mahaltesis and Andrew Albert, who have also, were also joining us yesterday, so we appreciate that. We're also joined on remotely by board members Lisa Sorin, Randy Glucksmann, Jamie Barbas, and Vinnie Tessitore. So thank you to them for joining as well. They'll be hearing and seeing all of the testimony that's given today. So we start this off, as always, with our safety announcement, the recorded safety announcement, if you would, a letter rip. Gentlemen.
Your safety is of the foremost importance to the MTA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Therefore, we ask that you listen and adhere to the following instructions. If you witness an emergency, notify emergency personnel in the room and call 911 immediately. Please follow any audible instructions provided through the public address system or visually on screens in the event of an emergency. If an alarm sounds, wait for a public address announcement and follow instructions. If told to go to another floor or to evacuate the building, leave all unessential items behind and use Stairwell A just across the main hallway, or Stairwell B down the hallway past the elevators. If you have a mobility disability or cannot self-evacuate, please proceed to Stairwell D or E for assistance by MTA staff or emergency personnel. An automated external defibrillator, AED, for use by trained personnel is in the main hallway just past the elevators. If you need assistance during an evacuation, please tell an MTA staff member or emergency personnel, "Thank you and have a safe day."
Okay, thank you for that. Also, joined by Board Member Midori Valdivia, thank you for being here again today, and I'm told that Board Member Sharif Solomon is on his way, so he'll be with us as well. We do have members of the MTA staff here. I just want to acknowledge General Counsel Paige Grave, Chief Financial Officer Kevin Willens, New York City Transit President Rich Davy, Deputy CFO Jay Patel, and John McCarthy, our Chief of External Relations, the Chief Customer Officer Shanifa Riera, and our Government and Community Relations Team.
Haley Stein from Long Island Railroad.
I'm sorry. Hi, Haley. From Long Island, Long Island Railroad is represented by Haley Stein. I'm sorry I didn't see your card. So with that, Megan, would you let the folks know about the protocols?
Thank you, Chair Lieber. Good morning, everyone. My name is Megan Molina from the MTA. I will serve as this morning's hearing officer for this public hearing, the third of four hybrid public hearings, to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to MTA fares that are affecting transportation on the subways, buses, commuter railroads, the Staten Island Railroad, and accessoried. Today's public hearing will begin with a brief presentation, followed by public comments from speakers in the room and remote via Zoom. As a reminder, only those who are registered to speak will be able to give public comments. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in 21 print media outlets, including multilingual outlets throughout the region. The MTA also provided notice of the hearings in multiple press releases on the MTA website, on social media, and on multilingual signs and digital displays in stations, buses, and trains. The MTA's fair hearing website, new.mta.info/2023-fair-hearings, describes these proposals in detail. By participating in this hybrid hearing, you are consenting to be recorded. We encourage anyone joining via Zoom or live stream to take a short survey using the QR code or link currently being displayed. This survey helps us understand the effectiveness of our outreach. The link to the survey can also be found in the Q&amp;A section of the Zoom. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the fare change proposals contained in the hearing notice. Members of the MTA Board of Directors, agency presidents, and senior staff are here today to hear comments from the public. MTA's subject matter experts will be available to answer your questions about fare change proposals, both in the room and in the Zoom Q&amp;A function. The Q&amp;A function is available only if you are logged into the Zoom webinar online, and it is located on the lower portion of your Zoom window. If you are attending via Zoom online, type your question into the Q&amp;A function. Subject matter experts may answer your question if it is deemed to pertain to the subject of this hearing. If you are attending in person, you'll recognize our staff members by the name tag they are wearing. Members of the public can also provide comments, ask questions, or make requests on fares on the fair hearing website, new.mta.info/23-fair-hearings. You may also send a letter to MTA Government and Community Relations regarding MTA fare hearings, addressed to 2 Broadway, 17th Floor, New York, New York, 10004, or call the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777. Telephone agents are available from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. I should emphasize that all public comments, including spoken comments today and at other hearings, all correspondence, emails, and phone calls will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record regarding the proposed fare changes and provided to all the board members so that they can review them prior to final consideration of the fare change proposals. For the record, today's date is Friday, June 23, 2023. The time is 10:14 a.m. Now, let me briefly describe the procedure for today's hearing. I will call the names of people who are registered to speak in the order in which they are registered. The one exception here is that if those who have already spoken at a public hearing during this round of hearings will be moved to the end of the queue to give registrants who have not spoken at a previous hybrid public hearing the opportunity to speak first. We open the registration for today's hearing on Friday, June 2, and registration closed at 10:00 a.m. this morning. All participants will be muted upon joining the Zoom webinar. When your name is called, please enable your camera and microphone by clicking the camera and microphone icons on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Please note there will be a brief transition to allow you to access your video and microphone. We will give you 10 seconds to turn your camera and microphone on before moving on to the next speaker. In the event your name is called and you are not present, we will read your name again at the end of the hearing in order, in the order it was initially called. When you begin your comments, please provide us your name and any affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it for the record. Speakers must keep their remarks to two minutes or less out of respect for all other speakers. The clock on the screen will indicate how much time you have remaining, and visual and auditory cues will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. If you run out of time, remember you can always submit complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. American Sign Language and Cart Captioning are available at this hearing. The public notice for this hearing indicated that language translation services are available, but no request for those services was received by the deadline specified in the notice. To access captioning at the bottom of the screen, select CC, and you will be able to turn on your, turn on or enlarge the captions based on your preference. You can also view the entire transcript for context if needed. Users will not need to adjust their screens to see ASL. As a reminder, this hearing is being live-casted and recorded and will be available publicly on our YouTube channel and on our website. Again, by participating in this hybrid hearing, you are consenting to be recorded. Thank you very much for listening, and now let me introduce John McCarthy, MTA's Chief of External Relations, and Jay Patel, our MTA Deputy CFO, for a brief presentation.
Thanks, Megan. Good morning. We're going to go through a quick presentation that will provide background on how we got here and some of the, highlighting some of the different proposals and the promotions and pilots. In late December of last year, this MTA board approved a budget as it is required. It included a 5.5% fare and toll increase. It also assumed new recurring revenue from the state of New York. The governor then proposed a budget earlier this year that included new revenue, and she was able to negotiate with the state legislature and come up with a balanced approach for dealing with the MTA's fiscal cliff that had been outlined over the past year. That balanced approach included the new revenue that I mentioned. It also included new city contributions. It also importantly included efficiencies at the MTA. And finally, that deal with the state legislature did include fare and toll increases. But with the addition of $65 million, we were able to avert this 5.5% fare increase and toll increase and instead move forward with a 4% increase. So to, the next slide is illustrating where our money comes from and where that money goes. I think this is important for people to understand. Our fare box revenue represents 27% of our total revenue. That is down from almost 40% from pre-pandemic. Fare revenue is critical, but it only covers a portion of our operating costs if you look at the second pie. Operating costs includes employee salaries, health benefits, and that accounts for approximately 60% of our costs. It also includes other non-labor costs such as fuel and power. And finally, it includes transportation revenue bonds, paying down debt that supports the system for the much-needed capital investments that are made and other improvements. These costs increase over time, and it's important, and this is what the state legislature and the governor have agreed, that modest recurring fare increases help offset a portion of these costs. The next slide that we're looking at illustrates why a regular reoccurring fare and toll increase is in place. In 2010, then Lieutenant Governor and former MTA Chair had a panel that reviewed the, how the MTA raises fares and adjusts fares. It concluded that when you wait for a long period of time and then present a fare and toll increase, that's far more dramatic because you've waited a long time, it's harder on the customer. So instead, it was recommended that we have biannual fare increases that are smaller. And during COVID, as you can see from this chart, we did have a three-year period where those increases did not occur. What this budget deal in Albany has, is returning us to is the regular biannual increases, and that's what we are here today to discuss. Before we get into the specifics that Jay Patel will take you through, I just want to cover three items that have come up in these hearings and in other discussions with the public that I think are of important interest. First, our operating expenses. The MTA is very aware of the need to aggressively cut costs. It's something that we're regularly looking at, and not only is it part of this budget agreement in the state, with the state where we're identified $100 million of savings this year and $400 million in reoccurring in out years, but it's something that we will consistently do. Secondly, we hear from the public on the issue of fare and toll evasion and the impact it has on the budget of the MTA and the impact it has on the riders who are paying the fare. We want our customers to understand that we are doing, we're taking action on this front. Chair Lieber put together a panel last year. That panel has reported out. That report is available to the public. We encourage anybody who's interested to go to our website and read that report. We are taking action on those recommendations that were put forward by that blue panel. Those recommendations include looking at how we design our fare areas, the affordability of our system so that people are not looking to evade the fare, enforcement measures that are appropriate so that people don't evade the fare, and then finally, education so people understand why the fare is so important. And then finally, an issue that we've heard over and over again is incredibly important is the affordability of the system for low-income New Yorkers. There is a product called Fair Fares. It's very important that people who are eligible for this do sign up. It is a half-price fare. There are discussions ongoing about how that can grow, where appropriate, but please, if you need information on that, reach out to our government and community relations people in the room or online so that you can better learn how to make that available to yourself. I'm now going to pass it over to Jay Patel to go through the numbers.
Thanks. First, I want to give a little bit of an overview of how we approached the 2023 fare increase. In December, we started working with our board members, and some of which are here today, to discuss how the fare increase would be percentage-wise and implemented. We focused on three main priorities: increasing the fare to help balance the '23 budget as well as future budgets, allocating the increases with an eye towards equity, and looking at customer behavior to responsibly prioritize our most frequent customers. And the results of those meetings are in the following increases presented here. These are, I wanted to take a little bit of time to walk through our permanent fare increase, which is what we're here to discuss today. It's a 4% increase across all our different fare products. The proposals vary by ticket type as a percentage, and overall, the yield is a 4% revenue yield. Quick highlights: the base subway and bus fare will increase by 15 cents. The seven-day pass will increase by $1. The 30-day pass will increase by $5. On the railroad side, there'll be up to a 4.5% increase for our monthlies and weekly When we look at fares for permanent fare increases, we also have an opportunity now look at some of the pilots and promotions that we have in place. So this page sort of highlights our legacy of offering fare products and looking at existing capacity and delivering equity. So with those goals in mind, we're introducing some new pilots. We're looking at offering a seven-day Omni fare capping, fare cap that is on a rolling basis versus a static Monday through Sunday. Expanding city ticket to weekday peaks for $7 while continuing the off-peak for $5. Launching a new fare Far Rockaway ticket, and then continuing to maintain our deep discounts on monthly tickets, which on the railroads are roughly 40 to 50% discounted. This continues to help provide rail access via affordable fare products in communities that do not enjoy the same access to subways. Now I'll turn it over back to Megan to start the hearing.
Thank you, John and Jay. We will now move to the public comment portion of today's public hearing. I will call our first public speaker of the morning. When your name is called, if you're participating via Zoom, there will be a brief transition to allow you to turn your camera and unmute your camera microphone. Our first speaker this morning will be Representative Nicole Maliotakis, followed by Kristi Tolbert. Representative Nicole Maliotakis?
Okay, good morning. Can you hear me? Everything's good now, the text?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Well, good morning. I want to thank you all for having the public hearing. I hope you do return in the near future to holding these in the individual boroughs so it's convenient as well for those who want to come in person. In November of 2021, Governor Hochul and the MTA Chairman, General Lieber, said they would be indefinitely, that was the quote-unquote, indefinitely put off raising fares and tolls or making service cuts thanks to the influx in federal funding from the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the $15 billion that was received in COVID-19 pandemic relief aid from the federal government. The quote was, "We anticipate that there will be no fare hike for the MTA," is exactly what the governor said. She also said, "I'm really excited to say that we will not have to raise the fares or have any service cuts." The governor said any fare and toll hikes and service cuts were quote-unquote "off the table" in 2023 and 2024. But now, of course, the MTA is flipping the script with the governor's support, and they're planning to do both: increase fares and tolls as well as implement service cuts. This is on top of ridiculous congestion fee that you are planning to implement of $23, which no one in New York City should have to pay to enter another borough in the city in which they live. And you're not even doing it, by the way, with an environmental impact study, which I think is a violation of federal NEPA law. And the bottom line is, once again, we are seeing that the MTA is a black hole. We should be, and I'm pushing for a federal audit of every penny that you have received from federal funding because I want to know where it's actually going, because it always seems that it's never enough. And even your own employees, represented by the union, support my legislation to audit the MTA. But in addition to that, I would urge you all to look at these capital projects. I'll just give two examples because we're short on time. Eastside Access, this was a $3.5 billion project that ended up being a $12 billion project, and it was a decade over schedule. And then $600 million that was recently spent on 300 train cars that had to be pulled because they were malfunctioning. And these are the type of abuse that, you know, the toll payer, the fare payer have to pay for, and it's wrong. And the state is implementing a $229 billion budget, which is twice as much in the state of Florida, which has millions of more residents. And if you guys need money, quite frankly, go back to the state. Go back to the state, but don't start, don't keep hitting the tollpayers over the edge. I just want to say that in addition to these hikes, there are proposed cuts in my district on the B1, B4, B6, B8, B37, the B64. This would affect veterans going to the VA hospital, students going to schools, and other facilities, so I urge you to reconsider that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kristi Tolbert, followed by Joseph Morales.
My name is Kristi Tolbert. Good morning. I reside in Suffolk County, and I am a regular rider on the Ronconcombe Line. I'm speaking on behalf of the Long Island Railroad Commuter Council. The top priority of most riders is having a reliable, fast commute, so it's important that commuters on the Long Island Railroad and across the system see improvement with our fares. No one likes a fare increase, but we understand that smaller planned increases are needed to keep it in good financial health. Improvements funded with congestion pricing money will help speed up our rides. Adding more creative and flexible fare offerings will help encourage ridership while reducing the financial burden of fare increases. Discounts and deals to incentivize frequent ridership are key, as is improvement service on the Long Island Railroad and beyond. We support capping the cost of monthly ticket fares for commuters that live the furthest from New York City at $500. We support the 4.5% increase on weekly and monthly tickets that would still be at a lower cost than pre-pandemic because of the 10% discount implemented last year. We support capping any ticket increase greater than 6% at a maximum increase of 50 cents per trip. We appreciate city tickets expansion to include peak travel and support rolling Atlantic tickets into it, but also support keeping the weekly ticket auctions that allows transfer to and from subway and buses and adding to ETICS. Without the investment, a transit pass in this year's budget, riders will be facing far greater fare hikes and potential service cuts. So we're thankful that Governor Hochul and the state legislator reduced the planned biannual fare increase. And on behalf of the Long Island Railroad Commuter Council, we thank you for the opportunity to comment and for considering our input. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Joseph Morales, followed by Adrian Pearl.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Joseph Morales. I'm a junior in high school at Bronx Engineering and Technology Academy. I would like to say, as far as fare and toll hikes to New York City Transit, as well as the bridges and tunnels, many who use both modes of travel, we've heard plenty during these hearings, don't want to pay more money for services, whether they're living in poverty and you need every cent you get to get by, or you simply just don't want to pay more. However, we know obviously, like, has been mentioned that these fare increases are deemed to be necessary, and we know that the MTA has fought for many things in order to bring more fare equity to the system, from the Fair Fares program, more discounts on the commuter rails. But the bottom line is that all New Yorkers work hard for their money, and they want to know where their money is going and how it's being managed. My recommendations for this are: New Yorkers should be able to have more immediate access to information on capital projects and maintenance, like the DOT. A lot of times, like, if they have a bike lane project, for example, you'll see a poster in the street and a number you could call. I've tried calling these numbers before to great success. If we could implement something similar, if we could also explore maybe some form of participatory budgeting or some sort of process where riders can have a more direct say on smaller projects that's going on in their community, that way they could feel more connected to the agency and realize that you guys truly do want to improve services, and they could actually see their money turn into results. I also wish for us to consider, the Empire Center for Policy and Research did an analysis that for the Second Avenue subway, we spent a lot more money on consultants than we did on boring the tunnels. These are the kinds of reasons why we get feedback like we did today on the mismanagement of the money. I don't know what happened, so I'm not gonna -- I can't tell exactly what happened, but if we could explore those instances to make sure our money is going toward the right things, that would be amazing and to give the feedback back to the public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrian Pearl, followed by Carl Pereira.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that have been said. Last I remember was Governor Hochul saying that, again, as the representative said, that the fare hikes would be indefinitely suspended. So, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, that was the last I've heard, and this idea that the fare hike has actually been reduced from 5.5% to 4%. To me, that's -- I never heard about the 5.5% at all, so I don't know, you know, what kind of sounds like revisionist history to me. But also, I just wanted to point out the -- I've been hearing about fare increases since Governor Pataki, and I remember that the emphasis was always placed on the long-term financial health of the system. And so I was really disappointed that there doesn't seem to be any comment in today's presentation on the long-term financial health of the system. And, you know, I don't even know from your presentation, are we going back to biennial fare increases forever? Like, are we supposed to expect a fare increase every two years, just indefinitely now? What's going to happen in 2025? What about 2028? Or, and years after that? What is being done to ensure that we can avoid these fare increases for as long as possible? Another thing is, it wasn't made clear to me, is this the fact that Governor Hochul's statement is kind of inoperative now, is that considered a policy failure? Or is that just -- are we just kind of accepting that that wasn't really -- we weren't really supposed to expect that that was -- that we could rely on that? So those are some things I would like to hear some more detail on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Carl Pereira, followed by Ezra M.
Megan, can I just note for the record that Board Member Blanca Lopez has joined us remotely?
Carl Pereira, you can unmute yourself.
Good morning. This is Carl Pereira. I'm a member of Passengers United. Regarding the upcoming fare increase, nothing is being done by the MTA to address transit riders who now have to pay two or more fares to get from their origination point to their destination point due to the current transfer policy of only allowing one transfer for one fare. It should be noted that there are many passengers that need to transfer more than once to get from their origination to their destination point. For example, there are those riders that need to transfer from a bus to a subway and then transfer again to another bus, or those riders that need to transfer from a bus to another bus and then to a subway. There are also many passengers that can only utilize buses, and therefore, many of those passengers may need to transfer multiple times on numerous bus routes to arrive at their final destination point. Fare capping under Omni and Unlimited MetroCard passes, plus the reduced fare provisions under these two fare-collecting systems, do not adequately address these additional transfer issues due to the fact that more riders are telecommuting a few days per week, plus many reduced fare customers are only utilizing the transit system sparingly. But when these passengers do use the transit system, they may need more than one transfer to complete their trip. It should be noted that a Nassau county nice bus now allows two transfers for one fare to ensure that everyone could travel around the entire Nassau county by bus for one fare, and that's only one county. Here in New York City, we have five county boroughs. Therefore, a more generous transfer policy needs to be established. Given also that the Queens and Brooklyn Bus Network design projects are underway and other borough network design projects are to follow, where many bus route changes would require that more three-legged transfer locations be added by the MTA, we at Passengers United believe it would be far less cumbersome and less costly administratively for the MTA to instead institute an unlimited transfer policy for up to two and a half hours on all subways and buses as part of the--
Please conclude your remarks.
-- proposed fare increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ezra M., followed by Cara Girl.
Hello, my name is Ezra M. I'm a minimum wage worker in public service, specifically childcare, working in Brooklyn. I'm from Staten Island, where I was commuting to my job until I recently found a place to live in Queens. While living in Staten Island, my commute to work included the bus ferry and two train transfers, which meant I was paying $55 a week. This became even more costly when you account for the all-too-common problems with the train, which meant I had to transfer to another bus, meaning I would pay up to $80 a week just to get to work and home. With my salary, it would take an entire shift to pay this off, taking out of my already small salary I'm using to pay rent and this deep cost of mental health care I require. I am sharing this to inform the committee on the circumstances of New Yorkers like myself. Not all are as fortunate as I am, as I do have a job and secure housing, and I am not at risk of homelessness. Unfortunately, many New Yorkers cannot say the same due to the ridiculously high cost of living and transportation in the city. This fare increase will not benefit New Yorkers, which the MTA is specifically designed to serve. Mayor Adams has been consistently cutting the budget for public service and is now using low-income New Yorkers who rely on transit to pay for what is supposed to be a public service. I urge the MTA to take into account who this decision will really impact and instead rely on forms of more dependable funding, not out of the pockets of low-income New Yorkers. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Cara Girl, followed by Rachel George.
Good morning. I'm Cara Girl, Planning and Advocacy Manager at the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. We've seen time and time again that when the decision is between a lower fare or better service, most riders would prefer a moderate fare increase over a service cut. We're thankful that Governor Hochul and the state legislature lowered the proposed hike this year and avoided service cuts. Instead, we'll see substantial off-peak service improvements on subways coming this summer and faster buses with able expansion. But the equity impacts of a fare increase can and should be lessened with action from Mayor Adams through doubling eligibility for fare fares to 200% of the federal poverty level, cutting the fare in half for over a million more New Yorkers. Fair fares should also be expanded to the Long Island Railroad and Metro North so that low-income riders living farther from subways and buses can benefit from reduced commuter rail fares. Fair discounts and deals will also help lessen the blow while incentivizing ridership. We're thrilled about rolling weekly fare capping with Omni and that the weekly unlimited cost will only increase by $1. This is the fare option most used by lower-income riders, so we appreciate your efforts to keep it at a more affordable price. Next, we'd love to see a monthly fare capping option. We're thankful for the expansion of city ticket, first proposed by PCAC 20 years ago, which offers reduced Long Island Railroad and Metro North fares within New York City. Making it available to far-rockaway riders will help improve transit equity and access. We appreciate the inclusion of peak travel and support rolling Atlantic ticket into it, but the weekly option that allows transfers to and from subways and buses should remain and be added to ETICS and train time. We support capping the monthly ticket fare at $500 for riders living farthest from the city and capping any increase over 6% at a maximum increase of 50 cents per trip. We also support standardizing the off-peak discount on the Long Island Railroad and Metro North. This is a step toward a more unified transit system and fare system for both railroads and an overall more integrated transit system. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for considering our input.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rachel George, followed by Alexander Estrella.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I currently live in the East New York Brownsville area, and currently, the bus -- the congestion of buses and slow bus services are impacting the neighborhoods tremendously, as well as fare invaders. So I would like to know how with increasing the fare is going to make that any matters better, that's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Alexander Estrella, followed by Rafael de Jesus.
Good morning, MTA Board. My name is Alexander Estrella. I'm a fellow at the Tri-State Transportation Campaign, nonprofit organization, and a CUNY student. Today, I stand here to oppose the new rise in the MTA fare. Like most CUNY students, I commute to school using the MTA transportation system. I live around one hour and 15 minutes away from my college. On a lucky day, I get to meet this mentor. However, this is not the case for most days. A delay is always expected, therefore I have to wake extra early and plan accordingly. I always have to ride in a crowded train for four minutes, wait 10 to 15 minutes for a transfer, and ride another cramped train for 20 more minutes. Yet, it is not rare to be late some days. During test days or final weeks, I must plan to arrive to school two hours early, which limits my readiness for such exams. Even so, arriving late to these tests may be still possible due to MTA delays. I am sure that this story is no different from my college student fellows. In City College alone, there is approximately 15,227 students, from which around 15,000 undergraduate and graduate students commute to school. Commuting costs are significant financial expense for us. It is something that we always have to keep in mind, on top of tuition, books, school supplies, homework, exam clubs, and many more. By raising the fare, you will not only put an extra concern on college student lives, but you will also not improve the MTA. Before even start thinking about raising the MTA fare, you should provide a decent service for the current fare. There is so much to be fixed with the current fare, but we are yet to see the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rafael de Jesus, followed by Nicholas Reyes.
So I understand that the MTA has a plan to increase fares. Fare increases are never good news because that means people, especially reduced fare riders and accessorized riders, or whatever else you can think of, have to pay more money, especially seniors as well. So, all I can pretty much say is, I think the MTA is good keeping the fares as they are right now because it's never good news when people have to pay extra money. I get that the MTA needs money to operate, but think of all the people out there: seniors, disabled riders. I myself am a disabled rider and get to ride half-price. And in my opinion, it would hurt that I'd have to pay more money to ride the bus or the train, or even a commuter rail train. I really don't know what else to say. All I can pretty much say is, I just think the MTA is good at keeping the fares of what they are. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Reyes, followed by Yingrong Yang.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
How are you guys today? So, my name is Nicholas Reyes. I'm the State Committee Member for the 68th District of New York City, and I come from a, you know, underserved community. And I know that there is incentives for people who come from underserved communities who don't make, you know, as much money as their counterparts in other neighborhoods to get fare reductions. But I just want to talk about it a little bit today before, you know, I hop off. I'm going to make it quick because a lot of people have covered what I wanted to say. So, yes, to impose any kind of fare increase does not make sense with the current infrastructure of our trains, right? I'm talking about our buses and our trains in particular, and I just wonder how many people who are responsible for this fare hikes actually take the train? Because if you did, you would know how absurd this sounds. It's gross, disgusting, overcrowded, noisy, especially when you go to Upper Manhattan and Harlem. It doesn't make any sense to impose this type of fare hike. 4%, 2%, anything is disgusting. The infrastructure is disgusting. And for the MTA to try to put it on the backs of riders is disrespectful, honestly. It's like, you know, we can't handle it ourselves, so let's offload it to the people. It's like a basic business move, and we're the people who have to bear the brunt of this, you know, fare increase. I don't like it, guys, and that's all I got to say about it, and I hope you guys have a blessed day.
Our next speaker will be Yingrong Yang, followed by Melissa Vicente.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Good morning, Board of the MTA. My name is Yingrong, and I'm a Macaulay Honors student studying political science at the CUNY City College of New York. I'm also a fellow at the Tri-State Transportation Campaign, and today I'm here at this hearing to ask the MTA Board not to vote to increase the base price from $275 to $290. Increasing the fare price would place a heavy economic burden on students like me who are barely keeping up with the price of rent, food, and tuition. Because of access to affordable transit, students like me can receive an education that allows us to develop ourselves in the future for the good of our community. The MTA should prioritize the social benefits of providing affordable fares. The solution to MTA's operating debt should be placing this burden on ordinary people like college students. I ask that our lawmakers and governors in Albany invest more in an MTA operation and that this board votes no to increase fares. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Melissa Vicente, followed by Yuki Endo.
Good morning, MTA Board. My name is Melissa Vicente, and I am a current fellow at Tri-State Transportation Campaign, a commuting student and a city employee. But today I will be speaking to you as just a New Yorker. It is statistically proven that those who use public transportation earn less than those who choose to ride a car around the city. As all of you should know, we have already seen an increase in the cost of almost every aspect of our lives, from rent to the everyday foods we put on the table. Increasing fares is not only a horrible idea, but also one that is unnecessarily targeting those which statistics prove are already struggling financially. While I understand the need for funding to improve the transportation infrastructure and maintain quality service, it is crucial to recognize that everyday riders are the backbone of the system. These riders faithfully utilize public transportation on a daily basis, often facing numerous challenges such as delays, overcrowding, and subpar conditions. I urge the MTA to explore alternative funding strategies that do not place the financial burden solely on the shoulders of everyday riders. It is unjust to expect riders to pay more for a service that has not demonstrated significant improvement in recent years. This would only succeed in disincentivizing the use of public transportation. I implore the MTA to reconsider the proposed MetroCard fare increase and prioritize the needs of everyday riders.
Our next speaker will be Yuki Endo, followed by Capricia Avery.
My name is Yuki Endo, resident of Jackson Heights, Queens, and I am a member of the Passengers United and ATA Accessible. I oppose the fare increase because the Roseville Island tramway, Westchester County Beeline Bus, and Nassau County NICE Bus will have to do the same. $2.90 is way too high. It's also a fare increase that some people don't want to pay, the fare, even in front of police near the service gate. Also, MTA should work with Westchester County DOT to lower the Beeline/BX-M4C fare to $6.75, so a seven-day express bus MetroCard customers can transfer as well. Also, I suggest free fare should be on buses that serve JFK LaGuardia Airport, Coney Island, B-57, B-60, B-61, B-62, BX-12, BX-12 SBS, Q-44 SBS, Q-52, Q-53 SBS, Q-32, Q-100, S-79 SBS, S-40, S-90, S-53, S-89, S-93. I don't agree with the 15% Long Island Railroad/Metro North increase because the Long Island Railroad and Main Line commuters are still being provided with poor service with no shuttle bus. Also, Long Island Railroad/Atlantic Ticket should not be discontinued because Brooklyn Long Island Railroad commuters are outraged with shuttle service on weekdays and no timed connection at Jamaica. If the Atlantic Avenue is discontinued, City Ticket should be merged with Long Island Railroad and the Metro North for $5, seven days' weeks, with free transfer to MTA subways, NICE Bus, and Beeline Bus, because $7 for Peak City Ticket is too much. I oppose toll increase because the Verizon and Narrows
Please conclude your remarks.
And Cross Bay Bridge tolls are already high, along with Port Authority New York and New Jersey bridges at Staten Island. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Capricia Avery.
My name is Capricia Avery, and I would like to talk about the Omni. Many deaf and hard-of-hearing people don't know how to get the Omni card, where to get it, and many in the deaf community don't like having to show their phone, because they have private information with the bank, they don't want to tap their phone. So I'm wondering, how can you get an Omni card next year? Where do you go? Is there an application to fill out? So how does it work? I need information on getting set up with an Omni card, please. Okay, thank you.
Luke, let's make sure we have someone meet with the last speaker and translation services. Thanks.
Thank you, John. We are now going to take a five-minute break, and just a reminder, if you believe you have registered for this morning's hearing but have not heard your name called, please either speak to a member of our staff in the room or indicate so in the Zoom Q&amp;A function. Again, we will be taking a five-minute break. Thank you.